Good evening, it's now six o'clock and the special meeting of the Lancaster Planning Commission is now in session. Mr. Burkey will offer the invocation. Ms. Haycock will lead us in the pledge. If you'd please stand.
All right, let's pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this evening. We thank you now for the information that will be before us. Lord, I pray that you'd give us your wisdom. Lord, give us an unusual wisdom to go over these things, absorb them, and make good decisions. Father, I pray you'd be with all the leadership in this city. Father, also be with the citizenry. Help us, Lord, to work together as a team, Father, to do in Lancaster what you would want us to have done, and then we'll be sure to give you the glory for it. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
If you'll place your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Burkey?
Yes.
Ervin?
Here.
Haycock?
Here.
Jacobs?
Here.
Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Chairman Voss?
Here.
Commissioner Malley?
Absent.
We have a call room.
Thank you. The first item is public business from the floor. We're allotted 10 minutes of time to hear from anyone who may not be able to stay for their full term of the meeting. Each speaker is allowed two minutes to speak. If there's anyone wishing to speak prior to the beginning of our reports, they're asked to fill out a speaker's card and turn them in. Doesn't look like anyone wants to speak. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review and a discussion of the citywide general plan update. This special meeting will be provided as a discussion and recap of the general plan document, as well as reviewing our homework assignment that Mr. Ludeke gave us last week. We've all studied the document and we've got lots of input, I think, for you, so we're looking forward to this evening. Mr. Ludeke?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. As I indicated to you at your last special meeting, as well as the Planning Commission meeting of last Monday, we really wanted to give you the opportunity as a commission. We've gone through the policy document as we planned to do. However, we wanted to make sure that you, as a group, had the opportunity to look at how the specific actions in particular were being proposed to implement various goals and objectives, as indicated in the plan, and make sure that you understood those, that you were comfortable with them, and I guess comfortable to the point that you understood them. I don't know whether to say you agreed or disagreed with them at this point, because obviously at some point you're going to have to come up with a collective recommendation as a commission. But we certainly wanted to make sure that you at least had a comfort level of understanding, because we expect that beginning, possibly next Monday, that would be the start of the discussion on the land use concepts, and from that point on, you're going to start dealing with, you know, how the map is actually created based upon the policy document. So I do have some brief remarks at an appropriate time to make on the one item I highlighted for you last time, which was the specific action related to provision of infill housing. But I want to make sure that we also answer your questions on other issues that you may have found in your deeper study of the document.
Very good, thank you. The three sections you asked us to concentrate on were the Plan for Physical Mobility, the Plan for Economic Development, Vitality, and the Plan for Physical Development. However, you also asked us to review the entire document in detail if we had questions about those. And so, where to begin? We've had the overview, so if anyone has any comments or questions or input on any section other than the three, the physical mobility, the economic development, vitality, or the physical development, maybe we could take those up first. If anyone does, please speak up.
Well, I have a couple of questions, mainly starting off with the introduction. On page 118, 1-18, in balanced growth paragraphs, the last line, "The community recommended that vacant infill property within the urbanization area be developed before and on the outskirts of the city." And that's kind of gone over throughout the document, and I have concerns about how we encourage that. If we put "before" in there, are we, how are we tying the city council's hands or the rest of the city's hands or developer's hands in who decides what project is carried out before infill is completed, so to speak? I'd just like to hear some thoughts on that.
Who'd like to address that?
Let me just go back, just take a couple of seconds to readdress the urbanizing area and what the urbanizing area really is. The urbanizing area, as exists on all of the alternatives, all three alternatives, is really simply the demarcation between urban residential, what's currently designated on the general plan as urban residential, in other words, that allows for urban density uses, and the remaining of the map are the city's area, which is rural residential for the most part. I mean, there are some areas in the northwestern portion of the city that are currently designated urban residential that would be considered outside the urbanizing area. But essentially, what really denotes is simply, if you look at the current adopted map, what is currently urban residential or urban density development is the urbanizing area, and everything outside of that is predominantly rural residential. So the general plan is not, what the urbanize, what we have been able to determine is that the area within the urbanizing area currently, the infill available land that is not, does not have anything built on it now, could accommodate the 2030 growth projections. And all three of the alternatives could do that without having to convert additional land for urban density uses. So it's not saying that that could not be done, it's just simply saying that it isn't needed to accommodate our future growth. If in the future the council determines that there is a need to convert additional land, that would have to be done through a general plan amendment and zone change. It has to be considered as a general plan amendment. But it, that's really what the urbanizing area is, just to clarify that. So what this is saying is simply that it makes sense to utilize that land within the urbanizing area, because it is available and is appropriately designated for that type of use before you convert additional land for more urban density growth that really isn't needed to support your long-term growth.
Well, I guess I would be a little bit confused with when you say "needed." Whose definition of "needed"? Is that just, we need 10,000 homes and so we can build them infill, so we don't need anything on the outside? Is that the definition of "need"? Or is "need" if, say, there's homes in a certain part of Lancaster, but you have, because it needs to be redeveloped, say, or it's not, the people don't like the schools there, so they want to live somewhere else? Is that the definition of "need"?
I think the best way I can explain, at least my interpretation of what this is saying, is that it is simply saying that, and it doesn't, in the urbanize, it doesn't negate development from occurring outside the urbanizing area, you simply would develop it at that density, whatever rural density is. In other words, it doesn't say that you can't develop outside the urbanizing area. It's not a boundary, per se. It's simply saying that you would develop land at the current, at whatever general plan density that would be, like rural residential. So it, again, the general plan sets, you know, it sets the parameter that you have enough land on your current, currently designated for urban density uses to support that 2030 growth without having to convert additional land. So, I mean, that's the premises the plan is taking.
I guess I'm just uncomfortable with the wording then. I understand, excuse me, totally what you're saying, but if somebody was to interpret this document, they could really take the wording and interpret it any way they want. So...
Are you concerned that it's a restrictive language? Is that what you're potentially, potentially could be interpreted that way?
Yes, yeah. It doesn't allow for the market to take hold. It allows for somebody in the city just to make that determination that we don't need any growth on the outside.
Isn't this section also, when you define "community," "community" is the group, the advisory group, as a definition, I guess, who gave input that gave the staff the background to define this?
The Citizens Advisory Group had input into the development of both of those alternatives. However, you have to keep in mind that the adopted general plan, what we have right now, has the same, it's not called the urbanizing area under the former general plan, but it has the same, the same urbanizing area on it.
It's just not defined that way?
Yeah. It's, we simply have not, we've not modified that with either of the other alternatives. It's the same urban density land that's designated in all three plans, the same extent of that land.
Whether the existing general plan document or what we propose to recommend, that might change that. Just because it's that way now doesn't necessarily mean that that may well be where we end up. That's part of the exercise.
I'm not quite sure what sentence you're saying is restrictive. I guess I'm probably a little confused. Well, it's in the introduction, and on page 1-18. Right. But then if you go to section 8-16... Yeah, I saw it, because it says "recommended," that's what's... And then it's 18.1.3 subsection A. It says prohibit areas designated for rural development from being converted to urban designations unless there is a demonstrated need for such conversion, and until the infrastructure facilities and public services required of urban development have been provided or assured consistent with provisions of the general plan. I don't know that that's consistent with there's a need. It's prohibiting. So that's why I'm asking what the, you know, who decides?
How do you demonstrate need, and who does, and who judges?
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about, because I think...
I'm assuming that ultimately, if it's a staff decision and the applicant doesn't like it, it would come before the commission and the council in that order. Would that be fair, Brian?
Yeah, ultimately, need is determined by the city council, as far as that's concerned. I think it's important to note that what you see, to some extent, and getting back to the issue in the introduction, that's actually what we heard from the community, even larger than I would say than the Citizens Advisory Group. That's what we heard from the community outreach efforts, was that there was concern over creating a development pattern that was very scattered. And certainly from the city's standpoint, at least city staff's standpoint, we would be concerned about ultimately costs of infrastructure and other kinds of things associated with that kind of a pattern. The intent is really to say that you should designate sufficient area to accommodate the expected growth by the year 2030. The plan not only does that, it actually has a cushion beyond that that it allows. And that allows us as a city over the long term to predict where, with some certainty, we can put investments in infrastructure, services, facilities, things of that type. If somebody were to say, "I want you to consider a large outlying area for development," I think the way that the policies of the general plan are structured is that you would then have, and I think properly, the debate as to whether or not there is a "need," quote-unquote, to do that. And "need" can take a number of different forms. It may be that that development provides some kind of amenity level or some kind of, you know, benefit to the city that wasn't foreseen or isn't provided by the current land use designation pattern. At the same time, you also have to balance that against what is going to be the cost of services, what is the economic impact on the city. And those are things that, you know, I think are properly done through a, you know, a proposal to amend the plan. I think it's also important to note that at one time, back in 1992, the city did in fact adopt a plan that would have allowed urban growth just about anywhere, between 110th and 110th east, you know, 110th west to 110th east. It became pretty obvious pretty quickly that there were some real problems with that, and the problems related primarily to the costs of service and infrastructure to serve that. And what you saw in response to that was a general plan revision five years later, in which the city council pulled back pretty sharply those urban boundaries and said, "We're far better off to define a reasonable area for urban growth that can be sustained for the foreseeable future." And then, at the point that that begins to be used up, debate where growth ought to be directed and where it ought to go. So, you know, that's kind of been the history of it. I think to some degree, all land use planning does affect the market. You know, I mean, the market may say certain density or certain use is good here, and while that certainly is always got to be considered, you know, we do that with categories of land use all the time in terms of housing densities, commercial versus non-commercial sites, things of that type. So I think the importance of the way that this reads is, the idea is that the city ought to ensure to the extent possible that places where it is already invested in infrastructure and services, that we encourage the efficient use of that land prior to really, you know, a large outward movement. And I will admit, it's one of those trade-offs that we've talked about, but that's one of the discussion points.
Well, the document also reflects, my interpretation of it, capitalization of infrastructure at the expense of the proposed development, as opposed to, in effect, standalone kinds of infrastructure improvements, so others, other parts of the community and city budget and so forth aren't burdened by having to capitalize that, right? I mean, that's the intent, I guess, is what I'm reading.
Yeah, that's certainly another factor in the consideration.
To help balance what you're just talking about, although I don't know if that's satisfied your question.
Not entirely. Well, now, are you saying that it's really the wording in the document? I mean, the way Mr. Ludeke just explained it is kind of different than saying it's prohibited? Yeah. Well, first of all, I don't want anybody to think I'm against infill. I am on board for infill. I think the city should do as much as they can to encourage it, but I think we have to look at, there are factors with infill. You have five-acre parcels, you have two-and-a-half-acre parcels. A big developer is not going to be encouraged to develop five acres here, 10 acres here, or smaller parcels versus a 40-acre parcel or a 50-acre parcel on the outskirts of town. So I do get a little bit concerned with when you demonstrate a need. For instance, if somebody came in here right now and said, "Okay, I want to, I think there's a definite need for more homes on the west side." You could argue, probably very easily, that there isn't a need currently, but yet we're in a downturn. The downturn happens, at least around here, to occur for many months, if not years. But when the need does surface, again, how far away then are they from providing those homes that are needed? I think you have to look at, it's very cyclic up here.
Is it true that we review this on an annual basis? Or the housing portion of it actually is a five-year, but the optional portions of this document, we can review on an annual basis?
The city does an annual general plan report, and actually, the review of the general plan, you know, can be done on an annual basis. It can be done at any time. I think, one of the things, though, that I also like to point out, and it does relate to the issue of infill, because we'll get into this discussion as we go along, if one of the goals is infill, you know, or making sure that land gets used efficiently, you know, you have to provide the incentives for that to happen, but you also need to provide the environment in which that can happen. And what we found in looking at other cities that have been in our situation, if they didn't kind of use both a regulatory and an incentive-based approach, sometimes they don't achieve the type of infill growth that they would like to have. If that need can be met in an outlying area, the ability to meet that need internally or to get that land developed becomes less, and the incentive for it becomes less. So there's a, you know, as we've talked about throughout this process, there's a trade-off situation, and it's really a matter of how the city ultimately determines its land use pattern and its growth best benefits its citizens. And there are certainly numerous, numerous tacs you can take on that.
Well, it's not just focused on residential, I mean, it's the whole palette of development and uses that these policies address, not just residential or commercial or industrial or multifamily or whatever it may be.
And I agree with everything you said, Brian, and I would like to be able to put in the document that where the city wants to encourage infill, especially with commercial. I mean, there's plenty of places in town that need to be redeveloped, and I know the city picks certain spots, like downtown, to encourage development, and that's great. Again, though, when you see words like prohibit, I would just like to see the wording changed, even if it was just discourage, but I think that encourages discussion then between the city and developers, and just doesn't prohibit it. There may be, I agree, it can go to the city council, but that's a long process, and I think a lot of that stuff needs to be discussed before it gets to the city council. So I would just like to see the language toned down a bit.
So you're suggesting then in 18.1.3 sub-A, modifying the word prohibit to discourage?
That's just one option. I think we have to look at different wording.
That's pretty key. It's pretty...
I think that would, that may go a long way, assuming everyone agrees.
Well, I'm not sure if I agree. I used to live in California City, and they have, when you say in this document leapfrog, they have that to the extreme there. There's one community that was built outside the town, but it's still within California City, that is outside the limits of the timeframe where the fire department could get there in a reasonable time. So the homeowners there have been forced to put fire suppression systems in their homes, because the city, of course, wouldn't pay for it, and the city in turn has raised the parcel tax because the infrastructure has grown, outgrown pretty much how much the city can afford, so they forced to raise taxes due to the fact that the infrastructure has grown outside the city limits, and they didn't have a grasp on that. And I think it's very important that we make sure we fill the open spaces within the city before we go out, because infrastructure costs are going to be massive, especially with the water issues that we have right now. And I've seen it firsthand in California City, that they had an issue with regulating their growth, their balanced growth, and they're paying for it to this day, and the burden is on the citizens, obviously, due to the raising of the taxes. So I think it's very important that we pay attention to where we grow and how we grow.
Good. Anything further?
Yeah, just a comment on...
Go ahead.
I agree 100% with what you said, and again, I'm not against developers paying for what needs to be done and what the city wants to be done. We certainly don't want circumstances of ones that you had just addressed, but again, I think we want to encourage discussion to solve those problems, and instead of just coming forth and saying, "It's prohibited." That's my only input for, you know, language, and I just think it's a little restrictive.
Anything more, Dan?
Not on that, no.
Okay. Anyone else?
I would just say in that same, in that same wording, there is an "unless," and I think that unless, in my opinion, addresses what you're talking about, Dan. It does say prohibited unless, and the unless is if there is a demonstrated need for such conversion.
Let me ask a question, then. If I understood, if I understood Mr. Ledbetter correctly, this specific action is similar to, says it satisfies an existing program, so that says to me that that's, that's been in the document for some period of time. Has it been problematic in the, in your judgment, as far as projects being proposed that would not necessarily fall within this language and proceeding forward properly analyzed, and maybe approved, maybe not approved? I mean, I don't know.
It's a bit hard to say, because we have, we have several outstanding general plan amendments that are located primarily on the west side that have not, I think, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, one has come to public hearing?
No, it's been scheduled a couple of times and pulled off.
And none of them have come to public hearing to be considered at this point, and they are all outside of what would be the urbanizing area, so...
So within this policy, then, the current policy of the general plan of the city, there are projects that have been proposed that are proceeding through a process to be then heard ultimately by the commission decisions made and recommendations made to city council. So under, so we wouldn't be modifying anything that's currently a policy?
Well, I would have to go back and take a look at the language that's in this policy. We may, we may have, in several of these policies, we may have strengthened the language, but essentially, the policy has been there since the '97 general plan, and it really hasn't been tested until, because we did not have any amendments outside of that area until we, until these were filed.
And we have received communication from proponents of future projects outside the urban area, if you will, as well?
Well, we've got, yes, I don't know, I'm not sure the one you're, are you relating to the respondents that was submitted to you? That's actually, that particular project is already designated urban residential, that area, the northwest area, the Del Sur, if that's what we're returning.
But there's been others, other communication, another comment as well.
The most recent communication, also, I believe, is on, is for an area that is either all or mostly within the, within the land that's already designated for urban residential development.
No, I sense it's an issue that the commissioners would like to have a little further research on, so if you wouldn't mind taking a look at that comparatively at least, and maybe we could have a further discussion about that next time we get together.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. And my memory is also telling me that I think this language mirrors to some extent one of the findings that's required for approval of a general plan amendment that was adopted. The city council adopted a resolution back... The city council adopted a resolution back when nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-four, somewhere in there, that they laid out what the findings are for approving a general plan amendment. I think that this language actually does mirror one of those findings, which is that there's a, there needs to be a demonstrated need. So we'll, we'll review that also and see whether or not that's, that's actually wording from a, from an adopted council resolution.
All right, very good. That satisfies everyone. Okay. All right. Shall we move on, then? Do we have any other comments or remarks on the, any other sections?
I.
Go right ahead.
The, in the introduction, it also makes reference to transportation master plan, and I think it's a priority two. And I, if I'm, if my memory serves me, it's initiated within, priority two means initiated within six to twelve months. Is there some kind of timeframe that staff is looking at that would determine when that might be done?
Yes, actually, I'm going to ask Michelle to, to respond to that, and she can give you an update on where that's at right now.
The transportation master plan is currently underway. We have a consultant on board who is working on that, along with staff. What we're looking at completing it, I believe the schedule right now is looking at March of oh nine to be completed with that.
Is that, would that be the same for the master plan for trails also? No.
No, that, that issue has not been initiated yet, that plan effort. So that would have to be a separate effort undertaken at some point in the future.
Any idea when something like that, or is that inappropriate to put in the general plan of when something might be completed by?
Well, it's, no, it's actually not inappropriate to list where, where you think it ought to fall as a priority. You know, the, the ultimate decision is, you know, the, the council's usually, as far as funding and prioritizing it. But if you have a particular recommendation, then I think it would be appropriate to take that forward to them. But at this point in time, that effort has not been initiated by, by the city.
I mean, I, I mean, I don't have a recommendation. I just, I can't, I can't remember what priority the trails plan was.
No, yeah, I read it.
Sorry. It starts on page four dash seventeen.
Is that priority two, then?
Right, most of the, the, the specific actions relating to the trails, the master plan of trails currently have a priority two designation.
Okay, so the, the plan would be to start that within six to twelve months upon approval of the general plan, right?
Depending on, on, on available funding, yes, at this time. I mean, it, you know, it's, it's, that, that would be the, the intent of the general plan is to adopt a master plan of trails. It would be nice to be able to do that. So hopefully, that priority is something that, that would be doable, but that may not be. We may have to set that priority back. I don't know at this point. But that's what we have in the draft at this point, that would be at least commenced within that time.
Well, based on your recommendation, then, would it, would it be appropriate to put something in with the idea that if the funding's not there, it might get put off? No.
We could do that.
Try and hold your feet to the fire.
Right, I understand, and I wish I could tell you, I, you know, this, this, this section of the general plan has been in the general plan since the early nineties. And so it's been around a long, long time. And it, it's the hope that that could be initiated within a given amount of time after the general plan was adopted. But, you know, I just don't know at this point. That's the draft at the time we did this, this section about a year ago, that looked like a reasonable timeframe. I don't know if it is now or not.
Yeah, the other, the other consideration from our standpoint is we, we think it would be important if, if the funding is at all available to move forward on it, because that master plan will take a while to do. And once it's in place, it will influence conditions of approval on development projects, be they trail rights of way or areas for connection. So the, the longer you wait on that overall plan, the, you know, I guess the more lost opportunities there are. So that's one reason we also think it ought to, you know, get some, some level of consideration.
I don't know about the rest of you. Maybe you could chime in and how important is it to you that we discuss any way to completion?
I think I, I heard it's been a priority of the, of the community for some years, and implementation has been lagging, wouldn't that be, without putting too fine a point on it? So if it has been a priority for a number of years and nothing's been done, it doesn't seem like it's much of a priority. I mean, that, that's a point of view. I don't know if, I don't, I don't know that I agree with that, that, that it's been lagging, but.
When you talk about an element that will make a community a community, this, this appears to be a huge one. You look at some of the other communities that have personality, like a Valencia area, Santa Barbara area, things of that nature, you've got great bike trails and paths and things of that nature. And we talk about making Lancaster a community that's distinct. I think you're right. I think this is an important part of it.
I agree with you too, Dan. And as Brian said, you know, it is very important in future decisions, as we look at new development, how that's going to look with, with that trail system. And I'm, I'm a little bit confused, because you said it's been on the plan since nineteen ninety. What, what has been the, has it been economic?
I, because really, there's two, two things that really probably have resulted in a master plan not being adopted, is one is that, that, or probably the most important is, once you adopt the master plan, once you have it in place, you still have to fund the trail system. And funding and building trail systems are, are extremely expensive, so. And a lot of it comes through grants and, and matching funds and, and state funding sources. And so I think that that probably is, the, the funding issue is a big, like actually implementing the plan once it's developed. But actually, the, early, in the early nineteen nineties, when we, when we adopted the nineteen ninety general plan, there was a, a plan in place, a map at least, a trails map in place. But that trails map related to the nineteen ninety general plan. And the nineteen ninety general plan had urban residential development, as Brian mentioned earlier, going all the way out to hundred and tenth, twentieth street west and a hundred and tenth street east. And when, five years later, when the whole plan was reviewed, and they pulled back a lot of those urban densities and put them back into a rural designation, that trails map became obsolete, because you didn't, because the trail system was designed for urban standards out in those rural areas. So what we did leave within the plan in the nineteen ninety seven general plan was the trail system. And the trail system pretty much remains unchanged from the nineteen ninety seven general plan.
Well, you talk about the, the funding being through matching grants. Has that been pursued?
Yes, in fact, in fact, elements of that, if you look, I mean, it's not, the city has, obviously, we have done things regarding trails. We have a bicycle trail, at least, partially implemented. We've, you can see things like the, the Sierra Highway Trail along, along the Sierra Highway that was built within a, just a few years ago. The Amargosa Creek master plan was one of the planning efforts that got underway. And I believe there's some more, Chris, if you might be able to elaborate on Brian.
Yeah, actually.
So there are elements that we've done.
Yeah, the city.
Pursuing grants and matching funds, so.
Yes. Yeah, the city is actually, right now, in the, in the process of getting applications together for additional work on the Amargosa Creek Trail, for example. We did and were successful in obtaining state funding for the trailhead structure, which is actually on the Fairgrounds site. We are trying to pursue funding to, to make a better connection between that and, and the trail system down the Amargosa. But, you know, getting the, the money for the physical improvements also carries with it the responsibility for maintenance and, and, for, for lack of a better word, patrolling to some extent those areas also. So there, there are a number of cost issues that the city has to consider in terms of that. However, I, you know, leaving all of that aside, I think, I think personally, getting a master plan of trails done is important, because at least then, you can begin to maybe focus your efforts on what are the key elements of that, and, and what are areas that you need to make sure that you don't foreclose your options, so to speak. For example, we have some development potential along some of the high, high tension power line easements that are on the west side. They, the opportunity exists there for maybe using some of that as trail connection areas where those easements already exist. Things like that, I think, you know, can be explored a little more thoroughly in a master plan than they are on an ad hoc basis. We're pursuing Amargosa because that's been a community concern, but sooner or later, we hope to get that finished. And then there's going to be a question of where do you go then, you know, and what, what do you then put your effort toward?
Well, your section ten point two point two B burdens the, the city, the commission, all of us, to require all new development in the city to provide dedications to right of where easements, along with improvements, where it's consistent with the master plan for trails. So unless and until the master plan for trails is adopted, none of that happens, right?
Yeah, it gets kind of difficult to do that, you know, other than someone deciding to do a local internal trail within a project because it's a benefit to them.
It's not likely we could, we could impose that as a new, as a new condition on one of our resolutions, similar to what we've done with water. It probably wouldn't get very far.
Answer your question, Dan. Yes, I'm, I'm with you. I wouldn't mind it being a higher priority. In fact, in, in the general plan lists obesity, lowering obesity and, and has health issues and driving less, and I think that's only going to add to, add to us getting away from driving so much, so.
Well, I don't want everybody to be confused. I'm not asking to change the priority. I just thought maybe it's pertinent that we look at an end date that, that public could see a document that's.
The process of, and the question I would have, the process with all these various plans, it's, the master plan for trails, there's all other plans identified in here that haven't been completed as well. The process, is the commission involved with those, or what?
Yes, you'd have a, a review and recommendation type, type function, much in the same way that the master plan for, for parks was done over the last year. The planning commission had the opportunity to review that and make a recommendation forward to the city council on that. So yes, as the planning agency of the city, you would have responsibility for review and recommendation.
Very good. Thank you. Anything further from the members?
Well, I guess I understood that. Could, could we just ask staff to look at maybe giving us some kind of idea of when something like that could be completed? And, I mean, to research, you don't have to give an answer now, why not?
Um, I, I guess what we could look at is, is what do we think is a reasonable time from the date that that was initiated, that, that you would have a plan in place and, or at least one for review and recommendation? We can, we can look at that.
Anyone else care to offer anything on any section other than the three we were going to talk about, I guess? No?
I just have, I just have one more.
Go right ahead.
On the introduction. Just a clarification on page one dash twenty-seven, paragraph five, water resources and conservation. What is the definition of, it's talking about growth will depend on full allocation from the state water project? When I read that, first thing I thought is, I can't remember the last time we ever got full allocation a hundred percent. So I was just concerned.
I don't know we ever have.
So does that mean no development until?
What page are you on, Dan?
Uh, one dash twenty-seven.
I think it, I think it says full.
No, I got them both, yeah.
On I twenty-eight.
Yeah. It starts on one twenty-seven, and it just says it will depend. And I guess I'm just asking for a clarification. Because obviously, if we don't get full allocation, no development's going to go forth. I just get, when I see full allocation out there, I guess I get a little concerned at what does that mean?
Yeah, well, I, I don't think, I don't think Abeck has ever gotten its full allocation. And in fact, if it got its full allocation, I don't think it could treat it right now. But you, you make a very valid point, and I think the, the underlying issue is for the type of growth envisioned by SCAG for the Antelope Valley area, Lancaster, Palmdale, the surrounding region. There's going to have to be some additional source of supply for water, in addition to whatever conservation efforts are, are made. And there's going to have to be a combination of that. I think the intent was that if, if you ever got, were able to get in a situation where allocations exceeded what demand was, that there needs to be in place an ability to bank or store those, those additional supplies for, for the future. But yeah, the, you know, as we've seen, there's going to need to be some additional source of supply for the long-term growth projections that SCAG envisions for the area.
So I think, I think the wording should definitely change then. That's a good catch. A full allocation, obviously, we're never going to get that, so I think, I think it should change to reflect various times where we have less water.
Well, the operation, operational sections of this document, maybe we should focus on that if you want to talk about the water issues. If you turn to, if it's a consumption use on page two dash eleven, objective, talks about water consumption, objective three point two. And reducing the per capita water consumption to two hundred gallons per day, and I'm assuming that's consistent with what the city council is doing, or has done, I should say.
Yeah, I, I think as I, I think we may have had this discussion before, that, that would represent probably about a third, a reduction by a third of the current per capita. And it was thought to be a, a realistic goal that could be achieved. And as you're well aware, the council has already begun taking steps to try to, to try to get there, including its recent introduction of an ordinance regarding landscaping and, and water conservation measures.
Do we have any idea what, if, if the city of Lancaster is shooting for, what was it, two hundred gallons? Any idea what Palmdale is shooting for?
I do, I don't know. I don't have any.
Would there be any concern that? Would there be any concern that?
For consistency and marketability, that sort of thing?
Yeah. If there was a developer from outside the area, if they look at Antelope Valley as a whole, sometimes they don't differentiate between Palmdale and Lancaster. They might think, oh, Palmdale's a better place to build or has a few more pluses to building there. I guess I'm just a little bit concerned about where the 200 came from. I'm not against 200. I mean, I wouldn't mind if it was 150. But again, we have to look at being consistent between all the communities here.
I agree. And as of three months ago, I spoke with Palmdale, and they were actually getting analysts to come down and to figure out exactly what their consumption per household, per person should be. So maybe we need to open up dialogue to find out how close we are to them.
Well, do we want to tie ourselves at 250 or 200 if we actually think it should be Is there a way we can look at that?
Well, the consistency probably ought to be within the ordinances as are currently adopted by the city council and how they've established their, as a baseline, I would think. And if the general plan policy document fits with what the city council has just recently adopted, you know, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. I just don't know. These are policies, not, these aren't specific details as it relates to ordinances.
Yeah, it's an objective, and quite frankly, I don't think you can take a water ordinance, so to speak, and say, well, that will reduce it to X amount. Like a lot of other things, I think this is going to be somewhat of a lagging indicator. You know, in a few years, we'll probably know whether we're there, you know, what has been the effect of doing it. And I might point out, while it's pretty easy probably to do this prospectively on new development, the objective doesn't tie itself just to new development. It really deals with the city as a whole. So the issue of how you reduce water use in current development is a little trickier and, you know, obviously something that's going to have to be addressed in order, I think, to even get to the goal that's listed here.
Well, I agree. I have a question on 3.1.1, since Jim brought it up. How do you ensure that land use changes will not increase demand on local groundwater basin? Doesn't the definition of development automatically increase the demand of water?
Well, to some degree, we're going to have to rely on the water purveyors for that. And, you know, certainly, I think that different ideas have been tossed about by, you know, the city council, at least in concept, including trying to have new development demonstrate that through whatever mechanisms it puts in place, that it won't create a greater demand for water than what is already there, whether that's by retrofitting some existing project areas somewhere, by helping assist in replacing potable water use with recycled water use and thereby, by, you know, not creating additional demand. But ultimately, that's going to have to involve a dialogue between the city and the water purveyors. And of course, in our case, the primary water purveyor is the Los Angeles County Waterworks District, and we are actually in those discussions with them, you know, now, as far as how that's going to be dealt with.
Well, currently, if I'm not mistaken, the MO is if you get a "will serve" letter, then that satisfies the city to develop that project, at least as far as water.
Correct.
Is that the intent of the general plan in the future, or is it both? That you have to satisfy the city that it's not going to, for instance, if LA County Water said, okay, I can supply you water, would it be the intent of the city to say, well, we think you're going to use, the net result is going to be an increase of water use, so we don't, we're not going to allow you to build? Would that be the intent?
No. You know, much of what you're looking at in terms of policy is something that's already existent within the plan. I think you may almost be looking at two different things there. In the case of an individual project, you know, the "will serve" letter issued from the proper water purveyor is still what the city's going to look at as the allowance for that project to go forward. I think, though, on the larger scale, you know, the city has a concern with making sure that the water, groundwater basin is properly managed. And as you're undoubtedly aware, there's a number of things going on in relation to that, including an adjudication process that's underway, city efforts to, as I said, replace potable water use with recycled water use where possible, and also the beginnings and assistance in groundwater banking programs and things of that type. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at it and say, is the city going to come back and say on a particular project, well, we don't agree with the determination of the water purveyor. I think that the "will serve" letter issuance is still going to satisfy the city for whether a project moves forward. But in the larger sense, the city is going to continue to work to make sure that that groundwater basin is not overdrafted, that we work to, you know, provide the opportunity for groundwater recharge where possible and other things that make sure that the groundwater basin is adequately dealt with. I think you have to look at development here as kind of a broader brush.
Anything further? Anyone? Speak right up. Excuse me, the public comment section would be at the end of the meeting. I think we talked about, when we had the initial review, three or four special meetings ago, about inserting the classifications of the Criminal Justice Commission and the new commissions that are now formed as it relates to housing programs, for instance. What do they call, what do they call the commission?
The Architecture and Design.
What is it?
Architecture and Design.
Architecture and Design, and then there's, there's another one, Section 8, I think, and whatever, whatever their titles are in the proper sections in the document. I think we talked about that. I don't know if you folks agree to that, but... So there's an identification of these other various entities that participate in the process?
Yeah, we did. A couple of meetings back, we talked about the possibility of inserting some of these committees in as specific actions in the appropriate places. We can certainly do that. But what we talked about is if this flaw becomes like a moving target, we, there's a final point where you, because there's going to be additional commissions and committees created that we may not capture.
By the time we're done with it, you'll have maybe one or two changes to go through.
Oh, sure, yeah. We can definitely insert references as specific actions in the appropriate places in the document, and those are good suggestions. They should be in there.
Okay, very good. Anyone else have anything before we start into the Plan for Physical Mobility? Anyone? Should we start there? Okay. So that's Section 5, Plan for Physical Mobility, how goods and people move about in our community for the, simply stated. Talks about streets and highways, parking facilities, alternative transportation modes, commodity movement, and air transportation. So, first, on page 5.2, V2, I guess you'd say, Roman numeral 5, page 2, the city's currently in the process of preparing a transportation master plan that will address a number of things. So if I understood you correctly, the commission's role in that will be a review as well and recommendation?
Yeah, I think the commission would review that, and Michelle had indicated a potential timeframe on that, but as the commission, I think it would be appropriate that you look at that prior to it going to the council.
It's an integral part of this document. I've referred to, you know, 40 or 50 times, so I mean, it's a pretty important.
Did you count them?
Piece of the puzzle, it looks like. Pardon?
Did you count them?
Well, I got tired of, I saw it a number of times, okay?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. I don't know, no, I didn't count them, Brian. Maybe I overstated, maybe it was only 35.
I was going to say, maybe we over-relied on that in some way, I don't know.
When is that report going to be available?
Is it October 9th? No, sorry.
March of '09.
Is that the same as the trails?
No.
No, I mean, is it on the same timeframe?
No.
No. The transportation master plan is underway right now, and we're looking at it being completed in spring of next year.
Okay. I'll have my Cliff Notes, but anybody else?
Well, I'll...
Go ahead.
I was just kind of interested in, in addressing the transportation, you talked all about going down below, south of us. There's no mention of any transportation going north to Edwards Air Force Base or up, you know, I don't know, just going north of us. I thought that was kind of interesting.
To other employment areas.
Right. Is there's no anticipation, or maybe even more important, no anticipation that people from the California City area, from the Air Force Base, would be wanting to come into Lancaster to do business or take advantage of our amenities?
That's a good point, because they, you know, when you talk about commuting out of the valley or commuting to other areas outside of the Antelope Valley area, you're getting people that are going to work at Boron, Edwards Air Force Base, and possibly San Bernardino, or not San Bernardino, but Bakersfield and Tehachapi. So there are a lot of destinations north, and that definitely has been for, that commuting pattern has been established for a long, long time.
So in the North County Transportation Coalition, is that a area of that's being addressed, or do we know? Does anyone here serve on that?
Maybe it's another report.
I don't know.
Maybe, Michelle, you want to take that one?
I've gone to some of the North County Transportation Committee meetings, and typically the conversations are about travel to the south. And it's northwest Angeles County, so there hasn't been much involvement with Kern County in those meetings.
I know that definitely, we know from just, studies have been done in the past and recent studies too, that the majority of the commuter population does head south to some location, either in the San Fernando Valley or Los Angeles or San Francisco, the working commuters.
Well, between the military off-base and the private sector employment at Edwards, it's in the thousands, isn't it?
Yes. No, it's a very important part of the job base. Definitely, that's the case. We know that the majority of the commuting population that are leaving the valley are going south to work in various locations.
So would it be your desire, then, to somehow infuse into these sections on streets and highways certainly, or in the other portions of this, some mention of the northern North County into Kern and points north and possibly east?
Yeah, certainly seems to me that we, it's something we shouldn't overlook.
I totally agree with that, not to mention that we've mentioned Edwards Air Force Base several times in the general plan. I would assume we have a way to get there.
Well, it was interesting, you know, Edwards recently took out a runway, and there were huge trucks leaving Edwards every day constantly, going down through Rosamund and then down the 14, and being, unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, but I had the opportunity to go out to the base twice during that whole process, and that was a huge impact on your ability to commute back there and then coming back into Lancaster. It's just, I think it's something that you really should look at.
Interesting on defining, if you will, or if you, page, Roman numeral 5, page 3, in the second bullet paragraph, where it defines the general plan for physical mobility and the program to mitigate traffic impacts on new development is subject to the provisions of Los Angeles County Congestion Management Plan. In simple terms, a CMP requires that new development provide adequate analysis and mitigation for the traffic impacts on regional arterials and state highway systems, including analysis, mitigation, and mitigation across jurisdictional boundaries. And is that covered, that section is covered on proposed new developments and under the SEQA process?
It is covered under SEQA, but Michelle can, I think, answer this probably far better than I could. There are certain roadway segments that are contained within what's known as the Congestion Management Plan, and there are provisions that require us to consider the effects of projects on those.
Understand that, but since we don't have LA County Congestion Management Plan, and it's an integral part of this document, how are we to make that judgment on faith?
Okay. I'll let Michelle address that.
Within the Congestion Management Plan, there are specific streets that are to be monitored, and the city of Lancaster actually doesn't have any streets that are to be monitored as part of this plan. But in some of our traffic studies that we would have for specific developments, we do look at our arterial street system, and we would also look at any of the state facilities that might be impacted by a specific project. I don't know, did that answer your question?
You answered the process question, but the overall guiding document is the Congestion Management Plan, which becomes a part of this, just like the Lancaster Transportation Master Plan, which has yet to be created and it's currently being worked on, right?
It is being worked on. The Congestion Management Plan that exists, the only, the only transportation facility that Lancaster affects that's within that, I think, is Highway 14.
Are which?
Highway 14.
Only the state highways?
Yes. And there are, within SEQA, getting back to your questions, there are specific circumstances in which we must address the effects of a project on that state highway. the most part, so I think that, you know, it's, it's something that we look at when, when projects come in, the city changed its right-of-way requirements several years ago to ensure that when new secondary street cross-sections are built, that there's sufficient room for those on-street bike facilities to be located, but that's really, over the long term, where the permanent location of those are intended to be arterial streets, there probably will be some circumstances where we will maintain bike lanes in those circumstances, but for the most part, those are not the preferred location, given the amount of traffic that they carry versus the secondary ones.
So, when the, so when the transportation master plan comes before us, then those issues will be identified then, within that document?
I, I don't know whether that's addressed within it.
Yes, the transportation master plan, we do plan on, at least looking at which streets, or what types of streets we would like to have bicycle paths.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, are we ready to move on?
Jump right in.
The Roman numeral five, page four, under alternative transportation modes, it's the second bullet point, I just need an explanation as to what...
Taxi voucher system?
Yeah, it reads, "At the same time, it will be important to offer alternatives to lower-density areas such as demand-response services, volunteer driver programs, and taxi voucher systems, and other similar programs." Can you explain what that is?
I'll give it a shot. What this is referring to is the fact that, because in urban, in rural residential areas, you don't have, because you don't have the population density, it doesn't make it economical, so what they're, what this is talking about is offering alternatives to that, for instance, like providing voucher systems, you know, that where you would have, if somebody needed a ride, and that lived out in a rural area, that needed a ride into a destination, then there would be a voucher system, a possible voucher system established whereby that citizen could get a ride in.
That is funded by the city?
Pardon me?
Vouchers funded by the city?
It's really not identifying here who would be the entity who would do that, it's just saying, it's putting out some possible ideas for how to address that. That might be one option.
I just wonder how feasible that really is, I...
Yeah. It's identified those rural, not, as opposed to urban?
I'm sorry?
It's identified as an, as a rural need, as opposed to urban?
Well, it's saying, in areas outside the urbanizing area, which are predominantly rural residential.
I just wonder about the feasibility of that, and speaking from a professional standpoint, is, working for the American Cancer Society, we're, we're searching for volunteer drivers and vouchers, and things to transport cancer patients to their treatments, and I just wonder how feasible it is to really expect, you know, volunteer drivers to come forward to drive people from rural areas into the urbanized area, and to obtain those vouchers, so, just an observation.
Next paragraph down, or the, said two paragraphs down, "The opportunities to establish a major multimodal hub within the city that will provide for connectivity between local and regional transportation services." On the same Roman numeral four, page four, under alternative transportation modes, so given that as a, that statement, then, would it be incumbent upon us to identify in the general plan, land use map, those opportunities, or what?
I don't know that you need to identify them on the, on the land use map, but I think it, it is incumbent on us to look at how development patterns proceed, and determine whether there might be areas where such a thing could be appropriate. I guess the best example that we have of that right now within the city is probably the park-and-ride facility, and the, and the bus pickup area at Lancaster City Park, where you have a tie-in of bus lines, and also the ability for the, the long-haul lines into, into the Los Angeles area. Another good example, not within our city, but is the, the MetroLink station in Palmdale, where you have, you know, bus lines feeding into the MetroLink line, so...
Their station happens to be on the, on the land side of the railroad tracks, as opposed to ours, somewhat of a limited...
Right, so, so, but if there's ever, say, an opportunity to expand eastward from where our current site is, there might be that opportunity, it's something, you know, that the city's saying, we'll keep in mind, you know, we'll see whether or not there's an appropriate need for that, and there could be, given whatever happens with our downtown, so, possibly.
Yeah, a typical multimodal is a forty, fifty acre site, usually something of, at least twenty-five, I think, so...
So, we'll see.
Somebody inventoried the park-and-ride spaces, thirteen hundred and ninety of them, huh?
Yes.
So, how do you, how do you judge, it says alternate, alternate facilities may be needed, how do you make that judgment? I mean, is that just a, so is there some sort of guide in, in land use planning that...
You mean, as far as transit use or park-and-ride?
How many parking space would you need for a community that ships eighty thousand people to LA every day, or whatever?
I, I don't know that there's an easy number, maybe a transit planner somewhere has that, I tend to be of the...
Shell spray, got it.
Of the go-out-and-look-and-see-whether-or-not-you-have-enough-parking-spaces mentality, which, you know, generally, if there's not enough parking, we find out about it, so...
Okay. Well, I mean, statements are made in the document, and I, you know, have to take them at face value, so that must have some source.
Sure.
In the commodity movement section, it's clear that there are no truck routes designated, however, would it be, would it be in the, under the transportation master plan, then it would be likely that truck routes might be identified near heavy industrial-zoned land uses, with interconnectivity to state highways and that sort of thing, so we would expect that?
The master plan will take a look at whether the city should implement truck routes, I don't know that it's going to go into the detail of actually establishing the routes, but it will visit whether or not the city should consider specific routes.
Well, since our, some of our industrial areas are east and north, and some are west and north, and some are south and east, and south and west, I mean, we're a little bit fractured there. The biggest, of course, is the Fox Field, right? That would be pretty easy to identify what the truck route ought to be over there, I suppose, but the others that would be impacting through, I can think, was it Avenue H? That would be impacting through residential areas, and I'm assuming, it may not be a designated truck route, but you can bet trucks are driving on it, that's for sure, and then the truck parking and all those issues too. Okay. Talk about reexamining the specific plan, in the Fox Field specific plan as well, and that's section five, right? Although I don't know that I saw it in the, maybe I did, and I just missed it. I don't know. Do you recall that, David? We talked about reexamining the specific plan, but is there a, is there a specific action noted somewhere?
Yes, sir, I think there is, in, in the Plan for Economic Development, I think that's where it...
Oh, okay. So, it's not in the physical mobility, it's in the economic development?
Yeah, it talks about revisiting the, the specific plan.
Okay, thank you. Under goal fourteen, the objectives and so forth, objective fourteen point one, I think it's important that the community understands that certain traffic flows with tolerances to allow for potential short-term delays at peak hours is a reality in our community, and every other community, and there's no way to, to totally eliminate peak-hour congestion, so this, this objective reflects that, I guess.
Yeah, you can't economically build, you know, the street network for the peak-hour times, so, yeah, it does recognize the reality that you're going to have times when you have delays, you know, during those peak times.
It goes on to fourteen point one point one A, about adopting the transportation master plan, and a priority two, so priority two, somebody remind me, what's priority two, year?
Yeah, within a year, you're, you're going to, what it actually says, priority says, you undertake that task within a year from adoption of the general plan, well, that's obviously one that we most likely are going to meet, because we're talking about first quarter of next year for the, for the master plan adoption. For the master plan adoption, sorry. So, we're looking, yeah, that will, that would be, that, that priority would be the correct one in this particular case, certainly.
Seems like it ought to be priority one, considering, but that's only an observation.
From what I understand, they're, they're currently working on this plan, and it will be completed in March of '09, so, that's...
Before we adopt, before we adopt the general plan, actually, huh? We don't bother, so, no?
I think they're going through the, I mean, I don't know, you can rush that process.
It'll be, it'll be within the same timeframe, certainly, and again...
Then we schedule more meetings, I guess, wouldn't it?
Again, when we set, when we set these priorities about...
You may never leave this...
Half, half a year to three-quarters of a year ago, priority two looked like the, but they're doing better than that, so priority one probably is a appropriate designation, would be, you know, implement on adoption of the general plan.
On the next page, fourteen point one point one E, about establishing a ongoing traffic monitoring program, would that be similar to what the city to the south is doing, and have been doing for a while?
What are you referring to specifically?
With, with cameras on signal masts, and being able to monitor traffic flows visually, and those kinds of things?
The city does have, well, we use video detection, the majority of our intersections for detection, but as far as getting information fed back to our TOC, or our Transportation Operations Center, there's a few intersections that we do monitor currently, so this monitoring program, yes, we would hope to expand on, on the intersections that we can monitor within our, our TOC.
Yeah. It's a priority two as well, huh? So, the next one talks about conforming to the transportation master plan, and the subdivision ordinance and municipal code is priority one, which would follow before priority two, so I don't, I'm a little confused on that one. I don't know how you can do one before the others adopt it.
I think it's, I think it's listed that way, because we expect that the, the first thing that we'll be doing after the adoption of the general plan by the city council, is the, the initiating the review and the revision of the development codes of the city, including the zoning code and the subdivision ordinance.
Okay.
And given the fact we're ahead on the transportation master plan, it probably will line up okay.
Okay. Yeah, there's, yeah, here's a section of fourteen point one point three A, where it talks about specific action, establishing a procedure to determine road construction and maintenance needs generated by a proposed development, to assign costs, and to arrange for reimbursement by future developments. That is a mouthful. So, that falls, then, in the reworking of the fee collection methodology?
Yeah, that would be the intent on that, and, and, you know, once, once you have a transportation master plan in place, that...
It's only priority two, it's a revenue producer, shoot, that ought to be priority one.
Yeah, except you want to have the plan in place, so you know what you're collecting on.
Yeah, it's priority one, never mind...
Well, not everything, but... I had a question about fourteen point one point four A, where it says coordinate signal timing along the major corridors of the city's arterial system, says status is implemented, means it's done?
Yes, that's correct. We recently coordinated from major corridors, our traffic signals along our major corridors throughout the city. That was completed in about the spring of this year. We've been fine-tuning it, we fine-tuned it a couple months thereafter, and are completed with the project.
Okay, can you define what the major corridors of the city's arterial system are? What roads are we talking?
I don't have them specifically, but Avenue J, Tenth Street West, Avenue K, the, the major corridors, the primary streets. We did a, an after study of the plan as well, and it shows all the corridors, and which corridors are within the plan, and according to the plan, we hopefully saved twelve million dollars annually to the...
So, when I'm on Avenue K and I'm hitting a red light, it means I'm driving too fast?
It could. The plan's in coordination Monday through Friday, beginning at six-thirty AM, and the plan ends around seven PM in the evening, so the signals are not in coordination on the weekends currently.
Why is that?
At this time, we didn't have time to look at weekend plans, but that's something we hope to do in the future.
Okay, that's...
corridors of the city's arterial system. Says status is implemented. Means it's done?
Yes, that's correct. We recently coordinated from major corridors, our traffic signals along our major corridors throughout the city. That was completed in about the spring of this year. We've been fine tuning it, we fine tuned it a couple of months thereafter and are completed with the project.
Okay. Can you define what the major corridors of the city's arterial system are? What, what roads are we talking?
I don't have them specifically, but Avenue J, 10th Street West, Avenue K, the, the major corridors, the primary streets. We did a, an after study of the plan as well, and it shows all the corridors and which corridors are within the plan. And according to the plan, we hopefully saved $12 million annually.
So when I'm on Avenue K and I'm hitting a red light, it means I'm driving too fast?
It could. The plan's in coordination Monday through Friday, beginning at 6:30 AM, and the plan ends around 7 PM in the evening. So the signals are not in coordination on the weekends currently.
Why is that?
At this time, we didn't have time to look at weekend plans, but that's something we hope to do in the future.
Okay, that explains it.
Well, kudos to the staff on the timing of the signals. Obviously, we're up ahead of the proposition, so that's, that's a good thing to hear. Somewhere I read in this section about parking requirements to be reexamined, and I, parking requirement, development, development properties, parking requirements to be examined, and I'm, the reason it triggered my question, I think in the, in almost every case that conditional use permits we've looked at for commercial development have had director reviews and reductions by 10%. So I'm assuming there's got an ongoing study, then it's underway to address those concerns?
What we would intend to do as part of, as part of the rework, particularly of the commercial or industrial zones, is a reevaluation of, of the parking requirements that we have. Couple of things have led to that. Number one, when we went through the effort on the Amargosa Creek specific plan, we had the occasion to kind of look, as a part of that specific project, at what, at what the latest shopping center parking requirements are, for example. And what we're finding is, in some cases, we may be asking too much in, in the way of parking. The other thing that we're doing is we, we periodically do go through our, our commercial centers and other areas to try to determine whether we're, we're providing sufficient parking or not sufficient parking. And, and as a whole, I, I think we're probably overparked to some degree on our, on our shopping centers. But then again, there are some individual uses that we've maybe not been as happy with in terms of how their parking demand has been, has been calculated. So I, I would say in some cases, we may be looking at some reductions. In other cases, we may be looking at, at some reconsideration as to, as to whether or not, you know, we're asking for sufficient numbers of, of spaces.
Thank you. There was another, I should have looked at my notes before I got too far ahead of myself. I'm sorry. 14.1.2D, rural street standards. There's not necessarily a rural street standard now, but I recall from some of our considerations before us in previous hearings, where curb, gutter, sidewalk, street lights, that type of thing have been waived in the rural area, although there were no rural street sections, I guess. So under the transportation element, are you going to address that as well, I suppose?
Yes, actually, one of the things that we are looking at and, and our traffic people think may be important to consider, there's some debate as to whether we're overdeveloping our streets that are in areas that are long-term rural areas. I, I know that in discussions with Michelle, she's indicated that there may not be a need for the same kind of pavement, pavement improvements and things that, that we typically require. And what we would do is evaluate those and determine whether there might be interim improvements that make more sense in the long term.
They're not going to acquire eight over 14 or something on the...
It's more the width of the street than the pavement section. How many lanes we need.
Good idea. Talk about minimizing curb parking. So that, would that, that's 14.1.4. Does that talk about, wherever it went here? So would that be in all street sections? Is that what we're talking about, or is it just on major arterials and secondaries, or what, or do we know?
This would typically be on our arterial street system, where you want to move traffic.
Okay. On your regional cooperation, I think when it's finished, the example of 10th Street West at Avenue M will be an example of that regional cooperation, if and when it ever gets finished, of the street interconnectivity and alignment and signalization and all that. Long time coming. 14.2.2A talks about Plan for Community Design. That's a new one to me.
Yeah, I, that, I can explain that. I, I thought I caught all those. What originally, when we first set out in, in looking at revising the policy document, we'd actually looked at, at a separate Plan for Community Design. But in the forming the current general plan, what exists as for its community design is contained under a subsection in the Plan for Physical Development called Community Form. And rather than, just, just for, for consistency's sake, what staff decided might be the better alternative, rather than adopting a separate plan, was to simply go back and revise that Community Form section. So in the draft document, the community design component is contained in the Plan for Physical Development as, and it's called community, it's called community design. So I caught, I went through and before I released this, caught the various areas of doc, I thought I caught them all, but this is one that escaped my attention. No, this should be called a plan, or it should be called in the Community Design subsection of the Plan for Physical Development. And I'll, I'll make that correction.
Okay, good, thanks. 14.2.2A, or B, excuse me, standardized street section design and street trees and water usage is my question. Since we have street trees, and I, as I recall, when the water ordinance was being considered, a lot, there was a lot of testimony about trees using lots of water. I mean, I'm certainly not opposed to trees, but... Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know what a drought tolerant tree is. So I, I, it's a matter of consistency, and I don't know. You'll have your opportunity to speak when we get to that section, okay? I'm sorry, Mr. Liddick, go ahead.
The, there, there's been discussion internally about this, too, but essentially, the way the policy document now reads is that we, we anticipate and propose that the requirement for street trees remains. The type of trees may change. But I, I do think that this is one of those instances where you, you have to think about the long-term aesthetic effect on the community, not to mention the, the shading effect in, in our hot conditions. So I, I think we're going to have to come to some resolution between, you know, water demand and how effectively you can use it.
There's not much, there's not much shade in, in street sections and medians and that sort of thing, so...
Yeah.
Well, one thing I noticed also, I talked to a couple of business owners online in Cash Boulevard, and their concern was a little bit about how the, how the trees block their signs, their advertising. So I think definitely we need to take a look at that, not to mention the water issue, but, you know, blocking of their advertising, too.
Yeah. I'll, I'll quote to you somebody from the, the city of Sacramento several years ago. You may or may not be aware, but Sacramento's neighborhoods, its older neighborhoods are quite, you know, their, their trees are a big deal, and they, they were actually under attack to some degree by, you know, infestations and things. And so there was a, a proposal put forth to maybe just take the trees out and not replace them, to which one of the council members in Sacramento said, "If we took out our street trees, we'd be nothing but Bakersfield." So, you know, I, I think there is an aesthetic issue to, to consider.
I don't think he's ever been to Bakersfield to make that kind of statement. There's no way that they two are compared. Trees are no, amazing.
I only repeat what I heard.
Tell me about the High Desert Corridor on 14.2.4A. Do we have a, do we have a, a visual that you can tell us all about that that's going to be part of our land use map?
Actually, Dave, there, there's one on the current map, right? On the current land use map.
Yeah, this, this, the concept of the High Desert Corridor goes back many years. And it, at the time that the '97 general plan was adopted, the proposed right-of-way for what would have then been the, what was called the, the, trying to remember the exact, or the bypass loop, or the, the loop that would take traffic around the Valley and Connect with 138 at Avenue D, was shown on the general plan. And I believe it's shown at around 90th Street East, if I'm correct. And then it, then it goes up to around Avenue E and then cuts along the, the border of Edwards Air Force Base, and then connects with Avenue D. That, since, went through many iterations, and, you know, I, at this point, I have not been directly involved with the exact, or the, the current right-of-way alignments for that. Maybe Michelle can elaborate a little bit more on that. But that current alignment, or for lack of a better word, it's really just, it's showing a potential alignment that's on or adopted general plan would, would change. Would not be in that location under the, the most recent studies, is my understanding.
The High Desert Corridor, right now, runs primarily through Palmdale, and it goes down P8 and connects to the 14, and then heads out towards Victorville. There has been a joint powers authority formed for the development of the High Desert Corridor. The city of Lancaster is part of that joint powers, as is, of course, Palmdale and Victorville and San Bernardino County and Los Angeles County. And they meet, I believe, on a quarterly basis. And I know some of our council members have attended those meetings as well.
So if the right-of-way's been established, then it's incumbent upon us, according to this new program, to require and encourage all effective land use proposals to consider potential conflict, right?
The alignment has been established, and so the next step would be to acquire the right-of-way, and of course, that's going to take funding and...
Thank you.
So I think what this is looking for is just our support of that corridor.
In the parking study in 14.3.2A, my note says we need to balance design with public safety. A lot of employers, and, and what this, what this specific action, if I read it correctly, tends to do is to shove parking behind visual barriers and behind buildings in industrial areas. And industrial areas employ lots of people who work lots of shifts, and I'm just concerned about public safety. From the sheriffs, you know, cruisers and anybody else driving by. Whereas most of our retail, the parking's in front, rather than tucked behind, and for pretty good reasons, safety being one of them. It's, it's an existing program, I understand, but we seem to want to mound and landscape and put in low-profile walls around industrial office-type development, but we... Anyway.
Is your concern on that specific action with, with surveillance?
Surveillance and, and, and safety of the folks that work there, particularly in, you know, late in the afternoon and the evening and night, and, you know, that sort of thing.
When I read this, I, when I read the languages, as I get the, the suggestion that that's, that's the intent, it says that to the extent consistent with police surveillance needs. I was saying, you know, design these facilities so that they do have a, a safety factor in regard to police surveillance.
Okay. 14.3.2C, it's a new program talking about review and revise development criteria to integrate parking facility layout to achieve improved pedestrian access and internal circulation. So could someone describe to me what we have that needs to be revised? The typically, the typical design that needs to be revised, since it says revised?
Yeah, one of, one of the things, and we, we've been doing it mostly through design on conditional use permits, but there's really, we don't have enough within the commercial sections and the industrial sections of the, of the zoning code right now to really require some of the, the pedestrian safety features that you see in some of the newer projects, such as the walkways and, and things of that type. We, we would, we would like to, as part of any revision of the development code, try to give pedestrian safety within parking lots a little bit more weight in the design aspects. Some of the things that you see in the newer projects are some of the things we would like to have as requirements just in general in the zoning code, and we don't have them right now. So that, that would be the, the reason for the specific action.
In subsection F, you talk about a new program which requiring loading areas to be properly placed and appropriately screened. I thought we were doing that.
We do do it, once again, on the, on the requirements for, wherever you have a conditional use permit or things of that type, and we, we get a chance to really review the design. But if you look at our zoning code right now, I don't think it, it adequately deals with loading areas and enough description of the types of things that ought to be included in consideration of where those are located. So...
So it gives, yeah, it is to give you folks more ammunition.
Right.
And brings a project forward.
Yeah, it's, it's important because things that come to you as a commission, that's one thing. Things that are dealt with at a staff level, it's a lot better to have the, the requirements put forth in the code.
Thank you. Here's a section on fourteen point four point one C, talks about the question you raised on the demand response service and that. Passed it somewhere. Where did I read in alternate transportation section, maybe? Oh, yeah, here it is. Transportation, have we talked about that already? Fourteen point four point two C, improving the bus stops, that's... Is that the notch outs you're talking about, the, or the pedestrian-friendly locate, or place where they wait for the bus?
I defer to Michelle on that.
Okay, or maybe it's both.
Well, it's to provide for bus turnouts, so the areas for the buses to actually pull off the street system. It's also to provide shelters, more pedestrian connectivity to the bus stops. We are actually currently doing a study of all of the existing bus stops in the city and evaluating those bus stops to determine if new amenities need to go in or if there's improvements such as sidewalk or ADA ramp improvements that are needed to improve those bus stop facilities.
Okay. Fourteen point four point four three A, storage of, I think it is, bicycles. Or maybe it's not there. That's where my notes say it is. Provide reasonable and secure bicycle storage space for both patrons and employees. So we're talking about Sacramento again?
Once again, I think it comes down to trying to define a little bit better what we're looking for in terms of our bicycle facilities and so forth. The city's current commercial code contains a number of provisions in it that pertain to what you might call alternative transportation, people who bicycle or walk. Some of those provisions, I don't think are very reasonable, but there are some things that maybe we could address better. So I think, once again, this is something that as we go through the revision to those commercial sections, which, you know, quite honestly, we haven't revised the commercial sections of the code for probably fifteen years. We just need to take a look at whether what we're doing, you know, is being properly addressed by the code as it's written.
There's also, if I might follow on to that, there's also a consideration here regarding, again, going back to the master plan of trails and the funding mechanisms for adopting trail systems and the connections you have to provide. One of the most important connections to make in a lot of these funding resources is that you're making a connection to places of employment and so...
Well, you've identified a funding source, development review fees, so that sounds to me like the projects would then be assessed a fee based on impacts, I suppose.
That might be one, yeah, that might be one way to do it, but the...
Well, clearly says that's what you're gonna do. Development review fees under fourteen point four point three C says that's what you're, E, C, C, that's what says what you're gonna do.
Well, the point I'm trying to make is that in a lot of these situations where you're trying to acquire funding for trail systems, they want to see those kinds of connections, that you're providing a connection to places of employment and that you also have facilities at those places of employment to accommodate things like bicycles.
Okay. Fourteen point five point one A, back to truck routes and the inland port.
I guess I have, what is the inland port?
I'll address that. The inland port is a concept that's been looked at whereby, rather than distribution occurring immediately out of a port facility, that it would occur at a remote location. So you would transport goods directly from port facilities to an inland location where that becomes the distribution place. What it's intended to do is take it out of the fairly congested area down near, you know, port of entry in Long Beach or Los Angeles and put it in a more remote location. In talking at some length with Skaggs people, these actually are areas that are a way to grow the type of development of jobs that you can't otherwise do because what they're finding is whether these are kind of a rail-served or air-served or in some cases a multimodal facility. What's happening a lot of times is that companies that rely on that kind of transportation are putting satellite facilities in those locations and generating more economic benefit than you might otherwise see. A good example of that is, I can't remember the computer company, but basically they've trained UPS to fix computers as a place in Tennessee where if your computer needs to be fixed, it goes to this multimodal-type facility. But the technicians are essentially, the work is done there and then it's shipped back to you. It's not shipped to some factory somewhere. So what Skaggs is saying is that the creation of an inland port or something of this type is actually one of the ways that they're hoping they're going to be able to grow the job base within some outline areas, including the Antelope Valley. So obviously, if that occurs, we want to make sure that any kind of truck transportation facilities and things to it get adequately dealt with.
The next one talks about off-street truck parking facilities, which is also a new program. So this obviously needs to be addressed.
I would second that. I don't think that the city has given enough thought to that issue. It pulled in a number of distribution facilities and I don't think there was a lot of thought given to the off-street parking demand for trucks.
And lastly is the fourteen point six point one A, as it relates to the regional airport and encouraging additional regional air flights. Well, after the fourth of November, there won't be any, so... It talks about the funding sources being a departmental budget. So encouraging it administratively, is that what that's addressing? It's not talking about subsidies and grants and those kinds of things?
No, it's, I think what it envisions is that the city, through the city manager's office essentially, would provide whatever type of assistance that it deemed appropriate to help encourage the development of airfield and flight facilities.
So that's what department budget references then?
Yeah.
All right.
Handle out of that.
Okay, anything more on that transportation, or physical mobility section before we take public testimony? Okay. So why don't we then take public testimony on this section, on the plan for physical mobility and see how long that takes and then we may move on to another section. Do we have any speakers that have filled out a card?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman. I bet you might pull the office.
So if anyone wishes to speak on the plan for physical mobility would need to fill out a speaker's card and we will invite you forward and you can address the commission on that subject if you like. We'll give you a minute.
Yes, completely filled out in triplicate. David Sinclair.
Mr. Sinclair.
I wasn't gonna say anything, but I figured, what the heck. Just as far as the trails issue, the one thing that, you know, Dave was talking about and it makes a lot of sense that, you know, there's the funding problem and an option that I didn't hear brought up here, that I brought up when we were on the Citizens Advisory Committee, was just giving developers, I'm trying to think of the word, you know, increasing the usage of their land. I don't know why the word's escaping me, but, for example, increasing the floor area ratio, giving a density bonus if it's residential, that sort of thing. If you want a trail to be going through their property, I don't see why we need to be getting grants and stuff to fund that. Obviously, there is the maintenance issue, but I think that if the city wants to have a more aesthetically pleasing city and all that kind of thing, I think, I don't see any reason why it can't be incorporated into a citywide assessment. That's my thought.
All right, thank you for your comment. Thank you for your comment. All right. Okay. I think we're gonna go till about, oh, oh, well. Have another person who wishes to speak?
Hang on a minute. Nicole Parson.
What was the name? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Brett.
Nicole Parson.
Ms. Parson?
Hi, I'm speaking just like him, like, what the heck? So I'm trying to keep it to structure, structure basics and so either I was gonna, either put like current things that, like new stuff, well, okay, okay, basically I quoted this to the, to the outline format, I'm sorry, to the outline format and there's like a couple points that could, I don't have one of those that could, that are your outline and then your, the production of it is like, like pre-designated a time that, that to, to review, but have specific sections in that, inside of that, like identify conditions, need, specific things, also goals and then time to cross out goals, state milestones and state the needs still. And then, and then, and then like basic stuff, I don't know how really to put this, but in like environmental, you guys were talking about grants and then she mentioned like the ADA need and then you have like, mentioned like the environmental need, which like, like that, your ADA, oh, forget that. Well, environmental, well, there's two different types of environmental and which, there's one, there's two types of, or maybe three, but we have like the basic SEQA and the EIR and then, so there's groups, everyone knows there's groups within that. Well, departments, right? It's fire, what is it? Fire, the departmental reviews of the SEQA and the EIR. Okay, well, those are departments, there's fire, safety, citizen, air, noise, but, and then within side of that could be updated just for us because we have like state and county and it gets further and further away and so we have our own departments within that. Well, it's just a suggestion, but also include for global, global warming. But, but, can I get one or two more minutes?
You still have time? You still have time, go ahead.
Okay. Have we noticed the zero escaping? Well, and, okay, there's, there's this neighborhood by my house and it had a whole bunch of little trees, but, and then I saw, I'm vision, but that's a good word for all this is visioning, you know, and, and after the trees grow up and how it's going to look. And well, what this really is, is a roadmap and then...
And your time's expired, but we appreciate your comments and you'll have further opportunity at our next meeting if you wish to continue. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add a couple things. She did mention the issue of global warming.
Yes.
The city's general plan, EIR, will have to address the issue of climate change per the requirements of state law.
Thank you. So what's your pleasure, commissioners? Do you want to go to the next section? Twenty minutes? All right. You got one more speaker? Oh, okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Virginia Stout.
I didn't hear the last name, Brett.
Stout.
Ms. Stout?
Stout.
Welcome. I think the podium will lower down if you want to wait a moment.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? I, already? I just wanted to commend you at least on mentioning on the trail system and, you know, your vision for the future, that at least you're including bikes and bike lanes. I know a long time ago when I first moved here, there were a lot of bicycle lanes up and down and through Lancaster and gradually as the streets widened and more businesses moved in, they just disappeared. And I have lots of friends who bike from Lake Elizabeth and they bike from everywhere and they found it harder and harder because the bike lanes disappear and they come out and they go down H instead of through town. And they're always talking about how nice it would be to live in a community where they could, where, you know, for people who don't mind the elements to get out there, the hardcore bikers, who would bike to work on that. They bike to work where I work, a couple of them. And so I'd like to see that increase as well as trails for people. I saw some people out today, kind of walking in the Amargosa, along the freeway down there, just taking their dogs and for the park where the trail is supposed to be hopefully some... just taking their dogs and for the park where the trail is supposed to be hopefully someday, just creating a trail, just a big need for that. We have a very outdoors area and like to see that encourage, that vision, you know, taken from beginning to end, so thank you.
I had a question. I had a question for you, ma'am. Quick question for you.
Yes.
You don't need to say where you work, but your friends that would bike to work, where, general area, where do they live and where does work?
Well, I have one who works at, worked at Lancaster High School and Allen Valley High School and he biked in, went from Lake Elizabeth area, came over Gody Hill Pass, came on down every day after day. And he'd keep his bike in the classroom and changed clothes and would bike out and I know I help out on a lot of bike rides where people bike long distance and they, where I live on the more rural roads on the weekends, it's just full of people who are just doing long distance biking and they would come through town all the time. If you can go to any of the bike shops, you can talk to the people who talk about wishing they could actually use that as a, I mean bicycling as an alternative route to having to use their cars on that. It keeps them away, you know, physically fit and.
That perspective is very good to hear.
So I know there are towns that encourage that and I think since we're starting that way, you could head in that direction because you build up too much, it becomes very hard to go back and put it in, but if you're considering it now, that's the time to do it. So anyway, yes, so that's just one example, that's just one person I know and people come in from the east side. I know some people who come in from 30th Street East and bike in.
Very good, thank you. Add a perspective and conviction at the same time.
All right then, does that complete the speakers?
Yes, I have no more cards.
All right, thank you. So shall we go into then Economic Development, Plan for Economic Development and Vitality, which are?
For fifteen minutes?
Until about eight thirty, if that's all right with everyone, then we can take public testimony and adjourn until next Monday. I think it's next Monday. So anybody's got anything, jump right in there. Starts on page, row number seven.
We can just follow you, Jim, so we don't have to go.
Hmm?
We can just follow you so we don't have to go back and forth. Kind of hot scotch there.
Six, on page seven four, sixteen point one point one A, which is a new program, talks about the incentivization, Lancaster Economic Development Redevelopment Strategy, Strategic Plan. Again, this is an adopted, this is an adopted plan that exists.
Yes, it is.
So might be a good idea if we get a distribution on that since it's.
We can get that for you.
So we make sure we're, and it's a, it's a number one priority.
Could I ask, is there somewhere in this document or someplace I can find the four pillars of Lancaster's Economic Development Redevelopment Strategy?
Yeah, they're actually outlined within, within the strategic plan. They are addressed to some extent under the, if you look at the blurb on creation and retention of local employment, identifies two of them under that.
The Economic Development Redevo. Are they on the website or are they?
I think, is the Redevelopment Agency's Strategic Plan on the web? It may be.
I don't know where that is.
I would have to go look.
I know that those details are contained in the strategic plan and not, they're not Sixteen point one point three D talks about revitalizing and enhancing local commerce, encouraging the establishment, expansion of local business and the development of commercial and industrial properties which produce retail sales tax, transit occupancy tax and increase in the excess, doesn't say increased, but the assessed valuation by providing assistance with financing, processing and negotiating. The next one that talks about, these are existing programs that have been in the general plan for some time. Identifying in detail the specific retail markets which are currently underserved and encourage the expansion of existing retail business and to attract new retail business which provides goods and services that are experiencing large amounts of leakage. Sixteen point one point three G encourages development of usable commercial uses, usable commercial uses. Not sure what usable commercial use is, but maybe somebody will explain that. So that there are retail stores ready to provide needed local goods and services in newly developing areas.
I think what they're talking about there is developers to build buildings that would house businesses.
Maybe, I don't know.
Business space. That's what I read into that.
Yeah, actually, the intent, the intent of that specific action is to work to encourage as you have newly developing residential areas that you work to get local serving commercial in there as soon as possible to, to provide them a place to do some of, at least some of their daily needs. That's, that's the intent of the specific action.
Hey Brian, one quick question that I had is back at page seven four, creation and retention of local employment, the last sentence in that first area. It says the following outlines the general plan program to achieve economic self-sufficiency. Is that a vision for the Allen Valley to have the same number of jobs as we have working population?
Yeah, it's a long-term vision and actually if you, if you, if you look at the SCAG numbers, their projected numbers for the year 2030, they don't think we're going to get there. In fact, they, they show a worsening job housing balance if you want to look at it in that regard, but yes, that, that is actually one of the things that the, that the city's strategic plan is about, is trying to get that number improved through a number of different, different strategies.
Okay. Yeah, I was just going to mention the same thing you just said, every projection I've ever seen going up to 2030, 2040, the percentage of commuters is higher rather than lower.
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, that's a concern, you know, about whether, in fact, quite frankly, given transportation issues, energy costs and things of that type, I have some question about whether SCAG's population projections are accurate, if their, if their job projections are accurate. I'm not sure that you're going to have, you know, the continuation of, of an increasing commuter base given, given the factors that are working against that, you know, just in terms of time and cost. So I, I think it's a very valid, valid question. I think it's also important to note, and this is one of the areas of the document where it's called out, where we talk about, you know, what kind of communities envisioned. It's clear from this that the intent of the general plan is a community that is not, that is transitioning from, from being a bedroom type community to one that, that holds more of its jobs locally than, than not. So I think that's an important issue also.
More self-sustaining.
It appears to need to be kind of a chicken and the egg type situation. The jobs are going to be here if the people are here and the more people that come, are the jobs going to grow fast enough. There seems to be businesses that are betting on that, the Hamptons, the Hiltons, the restaurateurs that are moving in, but I've been here since 1960 and I haven't seen the business growth keep up with the population growth ever.
Yeah, actually, it was probably better balanced then, you know, it really, really started changing, you know, really started changing in the late seventies and early eighties with, with the increase in, in housing for people who worked outside of the area.
Talks about new programs, a couple of new programs on page ten. Community, community identity and strong sense of place as well as creation of a clear choice coalition. Those are new. Clearly new and one priority ones. So clear choice coalition.
And clear choice is just the branding of Lancaster, is it not?
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, it's, it's all tied to that branding. Actually, you know, if you have interest in, in some discussion on this, there are people out of our redevelopment, economic development side who we can probably arrange to have come talk to you and give you a, a better rundown than we're probably able to do. We do have, you know, people who've been involved with it, but they, they are more directly the drivers internally from a staff standpoint.
It's a little more than holes in the business card then, huh?
Oh, yes. There's a lot more than that.
Sixteen point two point one E, like Edward, a regional distribution hub within the Allen So that gets into your inland port task force issue.
Is, is there a model for that? I mean, would San Bernardino be the model for that?
You know, I, I hesitate to say that because I don't, I don't know the answer. I don't know whether they would be the best example of what they're looking at or not. I, I think better examples might be found in, of all places, Dallas, Fort Worth, where they have really made a concerted effort to deal with this kind of thing.
Yeah, I think Anaheim is also a little bit of an example of that. They're closer to the ports, but still they're inland. They've got a lot of distribution there.
Let me talk about policy sixteen point two point three, talking about sufficient and suitable finish sites to accommodate managed commercial industrial growth. Can you define what a finish site is or is that a, I know what I would call a finish site, but.
If, if you look at what was achieved with the development of particularly the Lancaster Business Park phases, that's what they're looking at wanting to do and in fact, it's a, something that the, the agency staff is working on now, trying to find another spot where for creation of a similar type of, of facility or, or location where the utilities, the streets, all of those things are in and it's a matter of, of people coming in and building the facility.
Okay. I back up to sixteen point two one C, previous page. We're talking about encouraging specific kinds of business. Is there a game plan for that? Back office operations, insurance, credit processing, internet-based businesses, federal government processing centers?
You know, they, these identify the types of things that through the strategic plan were thought to be, to be achievable here and, and that we had components in our workforce and also our community that, that would be attractive to this. Good example, you know, the, the call center area where, I forget, you know, the name of it offhand, but, you know, hotel reservations, things of that type, you know, were, were thought to be something that would be the type of job that could be attracted into this area.
Is there, is there a specific plan on going out after them? I don't imagine you, you wait for them to come, you go to them.
Yeah, and once again, I, I wish I could speak a little more knowledgeably to it. This once again may, may call the need to have our redevelopment, economic development people come in and, and talk to you about this at some length. In fact, that, I'm, I'm thinking that might be a worthwhile use of some of our time next Monday.
That kind of feeds into my question. Sixteen point two dot four, establish a monitoring program to determine the effectiveness of business attraction efforts. Is there some type of matrix or graph or how successful we are doing that? That's kind of what I.
I do know that particularly in situations where they, the city has tried to attract a major type of, of an employer, if there are situations where we have failed to do that, the city does go back and look at what were the factors that led to the choice of another location. Was it cost of land? Was it the availability of infrastructure? Was it processing time or was it some outside agency that, that was, was an issue? For example, the, the city tried at one time to look at a bottling company, but essentially the, the information from the County Waterworks District kind of made that difficult and, questionable. So sometimes we have control over some of those things, sometimes we don't, but the intent is to go back and say, what are the obstacles? Is the city addressing those and if we aren't addressing them, what do we need to do to address them? So there, there is a feedback process, yes, that evaluates that kind of thing.
Thank you. Okay, it's near our timeframe that we thought we would end this evening, so why don't we stop here at this section and take up, take it up where we left off at sixteen point two point four at the next meeting.
Well, if we're, if we're going to back up, I just have one, just one question on sixteen point two point two A. What is a Lancaster incubator?
It's a building that essentially is designed to incubate or grow startup business and, and the intent is to give them a place that, they may be somebody that's been doing it out of their home, but they want to, they want to get into a space that's away from their house and it's designed to kind of allow them through assistance and, and access to resources to kind of take that, that business to the next step. So that, that's the intent. There's, there's one of those in the, in the business park.
Thank you.
Okay, if we're done with our questions and comments. So it's now time for public testimony, if any, on this section. Do you have any speaker cards?
No, I don't. I guess they would also have the ability to comment just in general on the, the general plan revision.
Right, we can do that as well, yes. Anyone who wants to speak, have an opportunity to speak for a period of three minutes on the general plan. If they've filled out a card. Do you have someone, Brett?
Nicole Parsons.
Ms. Parsons, yes, go ahead, please. Dave, could you, David, could you raise the podium, please? Thank you.
There's only one speed on this. Slow.
Um, hey, I'm speaking on, who am I speaking on? Um, oh, yeah, all that. Okay, um, okay, well, I guess, that's like emotion or something, I don't know, um, you guys have, like, a lot of questions, okay, um, so, I guess what I do is, um, so, I'm, I guess, a small business entrepreneur, I don't know, not, something like that, but, um, and then, so I guess I say nonprofit, because only people want to, uh, people would want to donate instead of, I guess, pay for excellence, or something. Oh, and then I wrote, I wrote this, um, I wrote this little statement here, that it says, oh, this is at the end, it says, "Why include the rest without including the best?" And then, and then it goes, okay, well, anyways, um, I just do for, for a lot, I just do what, because there's paychecks, there's like, paychecks of all different kinds, too, and what I did is, like, for my family, right, and then, and then, some people say, well, you get your paycheck when you die, but, and then some pay, you know, like, you know, me, I say, you know, a reward is, you know, is, you know, you're the self, and then, and then people can't do what I do, because they need, like, a paycheck and a structure, but that's for anything, um, so, um, water, okay, water and, um, so, and, um, the workforce for the 21st century. Right now, there's a water, there's a water bond, I'm just all over the place, there's a water bond, and, um, um, and then also, as a section, and to include in your guys' design, like, is, would be, um, to also identify the grant specific to that area, and then, and will you, in your, um, pre, um, um, goals of, like, the plan meetings, um, and there's also, there's also, like, right now, there's a workforce for the 21st century, which is really good, um, because, um, it, it identifies funding, but it's on the government side, but it's really good, because it is, I mean, it's the most current thing that I found out there, and it identifies, um, the needs of, I don't, um, single parents, just time, and everything that you can imagine, so, I have, say, for instance, I'm sorry, which I have, um, I don't think there's any duplicate page in there, and, um, I'm sorry, that was wrong, oh, um, so, right now, for the model, for the water, this is water, um, I, this is water, but, Mr., would you, I know who, I'm sorry, the, um, no, the public...
Ms. Parsons, I'm afraid your time has expired, you'll have another opportunity to speak at our next meeting.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, I just need your agreement to, um, be pilot cities to offset cost of, um, of, um, the research, and, um, and then also, um, to minimize the payment of the reward from the federal government or the state government, and so that I can give these, because he and, as the water, and the career guy said that they have to steal my program, no, not him, the public works guy, Mr., I like him, just think...
Do we have any other speakers, Mr. Levicki?
I have no other cards, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, okay. Director's announcements?
Um, the next special meeting on the general plan will be next Monday night, November the third, uh, at six P.M.
All right. Anything further for the commission? No other speakers? All right, we stand adjourned then, till Monday, November third, at six P.M. in this chamber, thank you very much.